Good evening, Cerritos residents and the members of our community. I would like to call to order the Monday, October 13, 2025, 7 o'clock PM, City Council Successor Agency Special Meeting. The invocation will be given by Bishop Robert Magalogo of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and the pledge will be led by the Cerritos Aquatic Club. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Bishop Magalago, Magalogo.
Dear Father in heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity. We have come here to gather as a community. We ask you to have the Spirit to be with us that our City Council and our members of our leaders in our community, that they may lead and guide our community in the right direction. We are grateful for our freedom here and we are grateful for the our leaders that we have, and we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cerritos Aquatic Club and Bishop Magalogo. Cerritos Aquatic Club, can you please tell us your name and your grade in school, please? Come on up to the microphone. Please tell us your name and what grade in school you're going to. We'd love to hear.
My name is Stella Ha, and I'm in fifth grade from Cerritos Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Jane Lee, and I go to Cerritos Elementary School in fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Zion Wen, and I'm in sixth grade, and I go to Frank C. Leo Elementary School.
My name is Hayden Young, I'm fifth grade, and I go to Frank C. Leo Elementary School.
My name is Zoe Wen, I'm in fourth grade, and I also go to Frank C. Elementary School.
My name is Morgan Springer, and I am in fifth grade, and I go to Studebaker Elementary School in Norwalk.
My name is Hillary Chong, and I'm in fifth grade, and I go to Star Wars Elementary.
Helper.
Hi, my name is Madison Chong, and my grade is first grade. I go to Star Wars Elementary School.
Yay.
Hi, my name is Avery, I'm in third grade, and I go to Star Wars Elementary School.
Yay.
My name is Sean, and I'm in second grade, and I go to Cerritos Elementary School.
Great. So, Cerritos Aquatic Club, thank you for doing the Pledge of Allegiance, and thank you Bishop Magalogo. So, I really like those Cerritos Aquatic Club sweatshirts. They look great. Could you please come up over here? Could you, someone put down the backdrop. Cerritos Aquatic Club Bishop Magalogo, can you come over here? We're gonna take a group photo with the City Council. Council colleagues, will you please join me? You too, buddy. Bishop, you're here? You okay?
Everybody right over here on three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, and one, two, three.
Thanks, guys. Thank you for helping. Madam City Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call?
Council and Agency Member Hong.
Present.
Council and Agency Member Pulito.
Present.
Council and Agency Member Say.
Present.
Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Johnson.
Present.
Mayor and Chair Yokuyama.
Here. The next item is presentations. I want to wish, I want to wish everyone here at the meeting today and to our residents of Cerritos, I would like to wish everyone a National Hispanic Heritage Month. And I also want to wish everyone a Happy Filipino-American History Month. You know, the Cerrito City Council is excited to celebrate the diversity of our amazing city of Cerritos. The city of Cerritos recognizes September 15 to October 15 as National Hispanic Heritage Month. And the many contributions the Hispanic and Latino communities have made to history, in the culture of the United States, and to our very own city of Cerritos. In 1968, Hispanic Heritage Month began as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson. Twenty years, twenty years later, President Reagan enacted a public law to celebrate a 30-day Hispanic Heritage Month, beginning on September 15 to October 15. Hispanic and Latino communities continue to help shape the world we live in, including our city of Cerritos, as business owners, activists, artists, public servants, and more. And I am honored, I can't think of a person that better exemplifies that in our Cerritos community than this person. Dr. Jose Fiero, can you please come up? Dr. Jose Fiero, President and Superintendent of Cerritos College. The Cerrito City Council recognizes Dr. Jose L. Fiero on his 10th anniversary as President and Superintendent of Cerritos College, and in celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month. Under Dr. Fiero's steady leadership, Cerritos College has awarded over 54,000 degrees and certificates. Fifty-four thousand degrees and certificates, with annual completions more than tripling since 2015 and surpassing 9,200 in 2025, 2026. Latino students, Latino student completions have grown by 179% over the past decade, reflecting the college's strong commitment to equity, diversity, and student success. Through his inclusive, student-centered leadership, and in collaboration with his amazing trustees, faculty, staff, and partners, Dr. Fiero has positioned Cerritos College as a regional, as well as a national leader in equity, innovation, and social mobility. The Cerrito City Council is honored to celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month by recognizing Dr. Jose Fiero. Would you, could you please share with us some words, Dr. Fiero, about your leadership at Cerritos College and our celebration with you of National Hispanic Heritage Month?
Thank you very much, Mayor Yokuyama, City Council members, for the recognition. It is an honor to be here with all of you this evening. And I feel that I cannot take credit for the work that has taken place at Cerritos College. It takes literally a village to do the work that we have done. And I'm really glad to have all my colleagues and team members this evening, tonight, to demonstrate that this is not a one-man show. It is a collective effort, labor of love, because we really have to love what we do in order to see the results that we are seeing, and long-term commitment. We did not get here overnight. When you look at the success that the college has had during the last several years, it seems it came out of the blue, but it didn't. It began over 10 years ago building a dream and a team that was capable to develop the plan and get us to where we are today. We are not done yet. There is a lot more room for us to grow and a lot more lives to change. And I wouldn't do it with anyone else but the group of people that I have with me this evening. And I also want to thank the city, the community, for the incredible support that we have received over the years. Every time we have thought of an idea to expand our services, to improve the lives of our students and our contributions to our local community, you have said yes. And without saying yes, things wouldn't happen. So, thank you very much, everyone. Honored to be here and humble to receive this award this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fiero. Can you, can you please share us, share with us who's here with you from your Cerritos College family?
Well, I was told to do this in a different manner this evening, so I'm going to introduce first Ms. Blanca Pacheco, who is our alumni here with us this evening. You may also know her. You may also know her on her day job as an assemblywoman, so thank you for being here. Board President, Mariana Pacheco. Board Member, Dr. Chin Lu. Board Member, Dr. Dong Green. We have Chelsea, please. And Andrea in the back, thank you very much for being here. Frank is our Vice President of Academic Affairs. I said Frank is our Vice President of Academic Affairs. Executive Vice President of Business Services, Felipe. Telvina is our Executive Director of the Foundation. Amber is our Data Guru. Wendy makes our office work every single day. Thank you. And Robin is our Vice President of Student Services.
Thank you, Dr. Fiero. Thank you for coming and celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month and Dr. Jose L. Fiero with us. Council colleagues, can we please take a group photo with Dr. Fiero? And then after that, if we could please take a group photo with all of you from the Cerritos College. And here is our City of Cerritos proclamation to you, Dr. Fiero, Dr. Jose L. Fiero, celebrating your fantastic tenure of leadership. And it's National Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you.
Right over here on three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, a couple more, please. One, two, three, one, two, three, and one more, one, two, three. Thank you. Did you want to come, did you want to come down here?
Can the Cerritos College family come down for a group photo, please? Okay, everybody make sure you can see the camera. You're not gonna be in the photo?
Everybody right over here, please. I can see everybody. That's great. Excellent. Everybody right over here. One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, a couple more, please. One, two, three, one, two, three, and one more, one, two, three. Thank you.
There we go, one more, you guys. Good to see you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
What else? We know each other. What are you talking about?
Filipino-American History Month. The city of Cerritos joins communities across the country in observing Filipino-American History Month. Beginning in 1992, the month of October has been dedicated to celebrating the rich heritage of Filipinos in the United States and in Cerritos, and to the recognition of the important cultural and historical contributions that Filipino-Americans have made in our country and in the communities we call home. Cerritos is grateful and thankful for the contributions of Filipino-Americans who have helped to make the city of Cerritos a community rich in cultural diversity. Can I please have the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce of Cerritos, please come up? Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce of Cerritos. In recognition of Filipino-American History Month, the city of Cerritos acknowledges the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce of Cerritos, also known as FACCC and FAC3, in its vital role in supporting the Filipino-American small business community by offering access to public information, resources, visibility, and collaborative opportunities. Through its efforts, the FAC3, empowers local business owners and helps enrich Cerritos's dynamic economic landscape. By fostering community connections and encouraging mentorship and networking, the FAC3 continues to create meaningful opportunities for growth and success. Thank you, Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce of Cerritos. So, we're gonna be presenting you, the Cerrito City Council is gonna be presenting you with this proclamation celebrating the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce of Cerritos and Filipino-American History Month. President Dem, could you please share some words with us about the good work of FAC3 and who is here with you today from FAC3? And introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Demavent Kirino, and I'm currently serving as the President of the Filipino Chamber of Commerce of Cerritos. And I would love, thank you very much for recognizing our chamber in connection with the celebration of the Filipino-American History Month. I just want to share something because this past weekend, we partnered up with Long Beach Ube Fest and with the guidance and mentorship of Linda Johnson and the support of our mayor, Frank Yokuyama. We were able to bring this wonderful festival, Ube Fest for fam. And it was an amazing event, and while we are all in awe of the turnout and we were humbled by the amount of effort it took all of us to put the effort together, the event together. It's actually, something that actually inspired us the most is our youth. And that volunteered for the event, you know, from the kids and the teenagers who performed proudly with the cultural dances and and then our, yeah, and then even those youth that participated in the, who bravely took the mic and participated in our karaoke booth, you know, bringing positivity, energy, and fun in the space. And most importantly, to our student volunteers who helped us with the event. Without them, it wouldn't be possible. They were the ones that helped us set up, helped us do the breakdown, line management, games, and so on. I think some of them are here today. We would like to honor you guys. We would love to give you a shout out. Students from Cerritos High School, Whitney, Lakewood, Sado. Students from Cerritos High School, Whitney, Lakewood, Sado, what else? Sandimas, Cal State Long Beach, so many more. You are the future. We are very proud because with you, the spirit of Filipino-American History Month will stay alive. You are the ones that will continue and preserve and advance this spirit in the coming days and in the coming years. And it won't only be, it won't only be alive for once a month a year, but with everything that you do every single day. I'm truly proud to have our core members here today.
And I also want to make sure up here with you, DeeDee, you're supposed to be up here. DeeDee, you're supposed to be up here with the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce of Cerritos. So could you please tell us who's here with you?
So we have here today, I was part of the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce, SuAn, Tumakay, our VP for Membership, Ellen Rodriguez, Suing, our past president, our Ube queen, our VP for Business Development, Ron Vison, and also our ambassador, Edward Lago. Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Dem and Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce of Cerritos. We're going to present you, please, with this proclamation from the Cerritos City Council and certificates. Council colleagues, could you please join us for a group photo?
Okay, come on down for the group photo. President, President. All right, everybody right over here, please. Three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. Couple more, please. One, two, three, one, two, three, and one, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Can the, can the Ube Fest organizers please come up? Ube Fest. Ube Fest began in 2021 as a small pop-up event in Long Beach. Since then, it has grown into a beloved annual festival celebrating Ube, which is a purple yam native to Southeast Asia with deep cultural roots in the Philippines and which is enjoyed through a variety of desserts, drinks, coffees, teas, and so much more, right? This year, Ube Fest featured Dr. Diane DeeDee Caneda, who we just met with the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce of Cerritos as the official queen of Ube Fest. Sounds like you should be up here for this photo, too. The Cerritos City Council recognizes the festival's cultural significance and the positive impact it continues to have on the community. So thank you to the organizers of Ube Fest. And I'm going to hand you the mic, Lill or James. I'm going to hand it to James. Could you please tell us about Ube Fest and Cerritos? And it's Filipino-American History Month, and I think history was made. So here you go.
I just want to say thank you to councilor to recognize our event. And also, thank you to our team to be able to bring it here in Cerritos and give us access and help us celebrate our beloved Ube here in the City of Cerritos. It's actually pretty crazy to think that we started at a small clothing store just because it gets mistaken as an ice cream shop. And so we decided as a small business during the pandemic to make it a dessert spot for people to go to. And from the very beginning, we had over 1,500 show up in a small little shop for 10 vendors. And now it has grown to the City of Cerritos bringing over 150 vendors to over 80,000 attendance throughout four days. So it's really incredible to be able to do it here in Cerritos where we're fully supported by the council and gives us the opportunity to really showcase what we could do in our events.
Thank you, James, for you working with the Ube Fest Committee. Lilly, Lil or Lilabeth, Lil Cargania, and Dave Cargania, and James Oresti. And thank you for, with your Ube Fest markets that you've had in September and October for bringing 80, over 80,000 attendees to Ube Fest in our Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts parking lot. Thank you. So council colleagues, will you please join me in this presentation of the proclamation and take a group photo?
Everybody right over here. Three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. A few more, please. One, two, three, one, two, three, and one, two, and...
National Friends of the Library Week. In honor of National Friends of Libraries Week, the Cerritos City Council celebrates the invaluable contributions of groups that support libraries across the nation. Observed during the third week of October, this week offers an opportunity to raise awareness about the mission, goals, and membership opportunities of library support organizations. The City of Cerritos is especially grateful to the groups that champion our very own jewel of the city, the Cerritos Library, through fundraising and ongoing community support. Can the Friends of the Cerritos Library please come up? Friends of the Cerritos Library. The City of Cerritos recognizes the Friends of the Cerritos Library for their exceptional support and dedication to the Cerritos Library. Through generous volunteer service and fundraising efforts, the Friends of the Cerritos Library help make possible programs such as the Summer Reading Program, Student Art and Writing Contest. Eric, why aren't you up here? You've been a long time, you've been a longtime member of the Friends of Cerritos Library. Summer Reading Program, Student Art and Writing Contest, and a variety of special events throughout the year. Their recent contribution of $20,000 has supported a major community event along with book and tote bag prizes for readers of all ages. The Cerritos City Council extends its sincere gratitude to the Friends of the Cerritos Library for their outstanding civic engagement and continued efforts to enrich and strengthen our community. Thank you to the Friends of Cerritos Library. Shiva, can I please give you the microphone and you please tell us about the great, fantastic work of the Friends of the Cerritos Library? And please let us know who's here with you today.
Good evening, everyone. Let me begin by saying thank you. Thank you so much to our mayor, to our council, to the city, the library staff, and all of you here. Let me also begin by introducing my wonderful board, my friends. And when I say friends, they're truly our friends. Let me begin from this side. We have Padminy, and none of them are unknown to you. You've seen all of us all around, all these beautiful faces. So Padminy, we have Janice, we have Charlene, we have Tracy, and of course, we can't forget Eric, and I want to mention Annie as well from the library. So thank you. We couldn't have done this without you guys. And like, I almost want to steal the speech from our Dr. Jose as well as our Filipino club and everyone, because they all just said it right. They all emphasized on that volunteer. We, this is not a one-man job. This is truly a team effort. And we can't do anything in life, I think, without this team. So the stronger the team, the more successful your organization will be. And I can vouch for that because this wonderful group here and all the members who are at home and who couldn't make it here today, all my board, other board members who couldn't make it here today, absolute dedication, selfless dedication. They work hours, they work in conditions where, you know, we would think like, oh my gosh, it's hot right now, or it's sunny and I can't do it, it's a small little place and I can't do it. But these volunteers, they truly go out of their way to do things. So a big hand to all of them, actually. So let's give them a really, really big hand of applause right now. Thank you. Thank you. Now, since I have this opportunity, I could not let go without reminding you for the wonderful dates that we have. What do we do? Like how our mayor mentioned, we do make our money by selling used books. And that's the book sale we do. We have four in a year. Please remember, October 25th, it's coming up, Saturday, October 25th, we are going to have a book sale outside the library, 11:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And I promise you, none of these books are over $2. It's a great buy. The books are in great condition, most of them in good condition. But to a reader, the books are truly a jewel. I also want to remind you of another important date coming up in December. That is our annual Holiday Mixer and Volunteer Appreciation. I always invite our city council, our mayor there. I will send out formal invitations. But to the community who's listening and who wants to know what we do and how you can help us do what we do, I recommend you, please, come and attend this event. Do give me a heads up, please RSVP and let me know you're coming so we can be prepared. But I do want you to know that this is a great opportunity for someone who wants to join us and help us do what we do. One last announcement. When we talk about collecting money for the library and, you know, promoting the events, and we directly support a lot of our programs. One of the main event was our Summer Reading Program, has always been our focus. We did bring up a large fundraiser which was called the Writers Festival and the High Tea. This is one of a kind of an event, happens in March. This year, happening on March 29th, it's a Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We do have a panel of five to six authors that come in. They talk about their books, they talk about their lives, they talk about how they came to be where they are. And I highly recommend this because we give you an experience of a lifetime. We give you a high tea experience, and it's truly a high tea. I know the council members who attended, our mayor who attended, will vouch for it. It is a fundraiser. Tickets go out in February. So just keep your eyes peeled. The news will be in the library. We will be spreading the word out. And of course, if you let me know, I will send you out the flyers as well. So once again, thank you so much for all the support. Thank you for everything that you guys do to support us. And I can't even mention how supportive the council and the city has been to us. So thank you again very much.
Thank you for sharing with us, President Shiva Bat. And the High Tea, it was great to learn about those speakers that were at the most recent High Tea, and the food was really good, too. So council colleagues, if you could join us for a group photo. We're going to be presenting this proclamation, recognizing the Friends of the Cerritos Library during National Friends of Libraries Week.
All right, everybody right over here on three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. Couple more, please. One, two, three, one, two, three, and one more, one, two, three. Thank you. Mayor's Annual Appointments.
Mayor's Annual Appointments. City manager, do we have a report on item 5B?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, for item 5B, I will defer to City Clerk Saninava.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you is consideration of the mayor's recommendations for appointments to internal ad hoc working groups and external boards, commissions, and committees, and for community member service during the 2025-26 mayoral term. The city has received a nomination from the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce of Cerritos, or FAC3, a local general-purpose business organization recommending Mr. Jason Matthew Amonsek, a private sector individual, to serve as the city's representative on the Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board, or SELACO WDB, Board of Directors. Upon City Council affirmation of the FAC3's nomination, the SELACO Policy Board will consider approval of this appointment at an upcoming meeting. This appointment would fill the seat for the unexpired term ending June 30, 2026. In just a moment, the mayor will present this and/or any further nominations, after which staff recommends the City Council receive public comment, then review, consider, and approve by majority action Mayor Yokoyama's recommendations for service appointments and directions to the city clerk to prepare and post an updated Fair Political Practices Commission Agency Report of Public Official Appointments, Form 806 if necessary, and city appointments brochure to the city's... website, and to coordinate the dissemination of contact information to the respective external bodies and appointees. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions the City Council may have, and this would be the appropriate time for the mayor to present his nominations.
Thank you for the report. City Clerk? Do we have any questions from the council? Councilmember Say? Councilmember Hong?
Just want to say, Mayor, thank you for giving the new councilman have a great chance to learn all the conference and to attend it, all that. Thank you very much for your arrangement. I think you did a great job. Thank you.
You're welcome, Councilmember Hong. Councilmember Palito? Any questions? Mayor Protem? I will now open for public comments on this item. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for public comments on this item?
No, we have none, Mayor.
Okay. Are there any other speakers on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Does the council have any questions or comments? Councilmember Say? Councilmember Hong? Councilmember Palito? Mayor Protem? Okay. So first, I would like to, regarding the external organizations, the mayoral appointments for external organizations, we have the upcoming National League of Cities 2025 Annual Business Meeting. And I am the delegate. I will be attending the National League of Cities 2025 Annual Business Meeting, and I am also the president of Apamo, the Asian Pacific American Municipal Officials under the National League of Cities. My council colleague, Councilmember Jennifer Hong, will also be attending the National League of Cities 2025 Annual Business Meeting. So I would like to appoint Councilmember Jennifer Hong to be my alternate at the National League of Cities 2025 Annual Business Meeting.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Is a second required for that, City Attorney?
No second is required, but I understand if we are going to vote for it, it does, for the electronic voting system purposes.
Okay, Councilmember Palito seconded it. Let's vote on the appointment of, the mayoral appointment of Councilmember Jennifer Hong to be the alternate to the National League of Cities 2025 Annual Business Meeting. Okay, thank you. And...
The motion passes on a vote of 5 to 0.
Great, thank you. So I also, under the mayoral appointments, under the internal ad hoc working groups, these internal ad hoc working groups are very important for the City Council to communicate with internal city matters as well as external events and groups. And so we need to have an internal ad hoc working group to address the city of Cerritos's communication and liaison with our Ube Fest events that we have had these last two months. Also, we have a budget, on our budget, in our approved budget, we're having a Ube Fest festival next year, and we need to have better communication with the council, with all of the entities and organizations involved. So, for example, these events we had in September and October, we had these private Ube Fest events at the CCPA, the Ube Fest Night Market, Ube Fest Day Market, and they're providing revenue to the city. I think we need better communication from the council with not just City Hall, but also with the Ube Fest organizers and with the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce of Cerritos, which was helping the Ube Fest organizers. What we're hearing from Ube Fest organizers like James Resti is that they're considering holding it a few times a year in Cerritos, an open-air market with food and shopping, where they are renting the space from the city of Cerritos. We are getting rent revenue. So these market events are not funded by the city. They are paid for by the Ube Fest organizers. For example, this last two-day event, Saturday and Sunday, Night Market and Day Market, there was a synergy with our Cerrito Center for the Performing Arts. There were three shows that happened during the hours of the Ube Fest. Three shows, two on Saturday, one on Sunday. And another way I learned that Ube Fest is providing revenue to the city is that attendees of Ube Fest, vendors of Ube Fest, and organizers of Ube Fest told Mayor Protem Johnson and myself that they're staying in the Sheraton Cerritos. That Saturday night, they're staying in the Sheraton Cerritos. And as we all know, council colleagues, that's TOT, that we're getting because Ube Fest is paying the city of Cerritos rent revenue to have their event in our Cerritos Town Center. So, and also James Resti pointed out 80,000 attendees of Ube Fest, and those 80,000 attendees of Ube Fest are spending money in our city. In addition to Ube Fest, they're going to the Cerrito Center for the Performing Arts, they're going to the Sheraton Cerritos, they're going to the Los Cerritos Center, they're going to the Cerritos Town Center, and shopping and dining and spending money on top of planning to attend Ube Fest and attending Ube Fest. And just as a reminder, that the only Ube Fest event that is sponsored by the city is the spring event, which is going to be in March or April of the year, March or April of next year. And that's another reason why I want this better communication and better liaison of our committee with everybody who is working on Ube Fest. So I'd like to please form an internal, I am making a mayoral, I am creating as the mayor, the internal ad hoc working group, the Ube Fest Working Group. And I would like to please appoint to the Ube Fest Working Group Mayor Protem Linda Johnson and Councilmember Mark Palito. Do we have a second? Okay, we got a second from Councilmember Say. Let's vote.
The motion passes 5 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And for my last mayoral appointment during this agenda item, I would like to present for nomination as recommended by the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce of Cerritos, the individual to fill the remainder of the unexpired city of Cerritos representative term on the Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board, Board of Directors, Mr. Jason Matthew Amonsek. His extensive experience and qualifications are listed as an, as Exhibit 4 to the agenda, to the agenda report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second from Councilmember Palito. Let's vote.
The motion passes on a vote of 5 to 0.
Congratulations, Jason Amonsek. So he will be attending the SELACO Workforce Development Board meeting next week? Is that right? Next week because our City Council delegate to the SELACO Workforce Development Board is Mayor Protem Linda Johnson. And Jason, you'll be attending that meeting next week where they will finalize your appointment to the board on behalf of the city of Cerritos. Thank you. If you could please come up and join us for a photo. Council colleagues?
And then after we take this council photo with Jason Amonsek, will the nominating body, the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce, join us for a second photo? If you could please be ready.
All right, everybody right over here, please, on three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Couple more, please. One, two, three. One, two, three. And one more, one, two, three.
Okay. Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce, Cerritos, can you join us in this group photo? This is, thank you for nominating.
Thank you. Thank you for your nomination. Thank you. Thank you for nominating. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
All right, everybody right over here, please, on three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Couple more, please. One, two, three. One, two, three. And one more, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thank you.
The city clerk's office will contact you. Okay. And Linda will contact you.
Yeah.
Is that what I needed to do? Item 6, Public Comments. Thank you for your attendance at tonight's meeting. State law and our local rules do not support the use of profanity, hateful speech or activity that disrupts the conduct of this city business meeting. If necessary, I will issue an initial warning and call for a recess. After that, the chamber may be cleared if disruption continues. The following comments pertain to all public comment periods on tonight's agenda. I will open public comments at the appropriate times on the agenda. Please be prepared to approach the podium and begin your comments at the time you are called. Public comments should be directed to the City Council and made only from the podium during your turn. Please respect each speaker and refrain from any disruptive behavior or speech during their comment time. Public comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Agenda Item 6, Public Comments, should be limited to items on the consent calendar, closed session, and items not listed on the agenda but that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Prior to tonight's meeting, the City Council received full text, unredacted copies of the five written comments submitted by the deadline for Item 6, inclusive of one comment for Item 7C and one comment for Item 7D. Requests for copies of written comments can be made to the office of the city clerk, our city clerk is here, Cindy Nava, during regular business hours. I will now open for Item 6, Public Comments. Sam Desai. If there's any other speakers, please sign in on the tablet.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, before we begin, may I make a request, please? On our public comment section, it says three minutes per speaker, and I had brought to our city and mayor's attention a few months ago. And if you can, Mayor, just verify that it says three minutes before we start the clock. Thank you.
Go ahead, you have five minutes.
Thank you. All right, so hopefully we'll have this change, Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Sam Desai, resident of city of Cerritos. Soon we are going to enjoy Diwali, so happy Diwali. And also tomorrow is a historic day for city of Cerritos. We will have our Economic Development Committee. So those who are watching at homes, if you are appointees, council members, friends, please go to this committee and give your inputs. This is our chance to shape a fair, vibrant, and forward-looking Cerritos. Mayor, as you know, we are 50,000 residents, and we are one community. And we believe that over past and some of the behaviors which came across as vindictive, full of animosity, you know, we get to move from there and we need to make, you know, universal love our economic development policy. So let's not be vindictive as different ideas come in. Residents are going, you know, they want to give the ideas and they want to be heard. And as your local taxman and a small business owner, I see what families are building, investing, and what they need from our Cerritos infrastructure, industrial parks, how we can use that asset we have, how we grow it in different ways, in a smarter way, not just low-key boring projects, but vibrant projects, which is forward-thinking. So we do have our voices, we do have plans, we are working with various organizations, but please, we request, choose the projects wisely. So today you'll be talking about different projects, and when you do that, if just something comes up, doesn't mean you have to vote all in same way. I want to see more discussions, and Economic Development Policy Committee begins tomorrow. So maybe we should give them a little bit more time for that. Please understand that Cerritos, over time, have become an economic hub. We know where the numbers are. We want to see our numbers go up, revenues go up, use of facilities, but we have to do something about dealing with loss leaders. Now, I know the Ube Fest, my apologies, was a success, and it was only success because obviously we learned that it was Linda Johnson and Frank who guided a not-for-profit Chamber of Commerce to create economic quality or economic possibilities for Cerritos. Linda and Frank, I truly wish the respect I saw you gave Filipino chambers, I would have seen that coming from you, for decades old local regional Chamber of Commerce. It would have been amazing to see that respect coming from you guys. A local Chamber of Commerce has been key in bringing and retaining this Cerritos and council's reputation at the highest regard and to ignore the way you do. I would highly recommend that as you put yourself in SELACO committee, Frank, you're in one of the committees where I am, and you show up, we don't talk, but if these committees and all these things are that important, then Chamber of, Regional Chamber of Commerce is a key. They should not be coming here for things. You should be going and inviting them as an equal partner, and that is what makes a board strong. It doesn't have to be culturally sensitive. Another thing, I do have a concern here. And I'm not going to come from an animosity and I'm going to ask our council to... And I'm not going to come from an animosity, and I'm going to ask our council to please look at what is being written on Cerritos, lost Cerritos news. The editor is our Economic Development Commissioner, a friend of John and Frank and Linda. Our city spends a lot of money advertising with them. And what I want to do is the way they write, or if they remain silent or spotlight, it shouldn't show bias and financial collusions. Who you appoint, who does business with city and integrity is in your hands. And Mayor and Pro Tem, please show respect to our local Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Councilmember Linda Johnson, Mayor Pro Tem Linda Johnson?
Hi, I just wanted to make a quick comment. The success of Ube Fest, I just really want to hand it to the Ube Fest organizers. I think their marketing plan is very strategic, and they work hard of it, hard at it, and they know the algorithms of social media. So I really want to owe it to them for their success, which they really work very hard at with social media and marketing. So thank you.
Yeah, I'm just happy that I was able to attend Ube Fest. I was an attendee. And I'm happy that they paid rent revenue to the City of Cerritos to rent out that space. And they're having it in Cerritos instead of the other cities they've been having it, for example, Long Beach. But they're coming to Cerritos. They're paying us rent revenue. And I previously mentioned all the economic development benefit of having markets like that come to Cerritos, and I'm looking forward to other markets seeing what that Ube Fest Committee did successfully in our parking lot of our Cerritos Town Center outside of the Cerritos Center for the Farming Arts. And maybe we can get some other markets that want to bring a day market or night market to our City of Cerritos and pay us rent revenue. And our residents and visitors to our city get the benefit from a fun, unique, different night market and day market on a weekend. So we have Jerry Lumba or Gary Lumba? Which one is it, sir?
Jerry Lumba.
Jerry Lumba. Thank you. Thank you for coming, Jerry. Jerry Lumba.
Lumba.
Nice to see you, Jerry. Lumba.
Thank you to the City of Cerritos and councilmembers for having me. I'm Jerry Lumba, United States Marine Corps veteran. I was in Iraq in 2003, Cerritos resident. My son goes to Whitney High School as an eighth grader. My wife is Elizabeth Goings. And I work with local nonprofits. My company is SoCal Computer Guys. And I'm on the Executive Chamber Board of the Cerritos Chamber. I'm here just to update the city on that we are still running. We're currently working on getting the website back up and running. The previous vendor was just charging too much to get the website restored. And we're planning to get the taste of the region going again next year. And we're looking into working with the Filipino Chamber and hopefully Ube Fest as well, since they're very well organized. I'll have an update for the city next month on that. And besides planning networking mixers, we're planning on doing some luncheon learns. And this month, we're going to do a luncheon learn on estate planning with Jennifer Nakamura. She says hello, by the way. And then let's see what else. Currently, the way the chamber is operating, to be honest, we're all volunteers. We all have our own businesses or our own jobs. So forgive us if it doesn't seem as, you know, well organized or, you know, things seem to be slow. But, you know, we're all volunteers. We want to keep the chamber going. You know, I support the city. My wife grew up here. And, you know, I've met clients through the chamber, like, you know, Julie and Don Konabi. I was, myself was just fixing Don's printer like last month. So, you know, and then, like I mentioned, my wife grew up here, grew up here. And I love the city, and I'm going to support it as long as I can. So, a little nervous, forgive me. I got chronic pains being a disabled vet. But I'm blessed to be here in front of everybody, and hopefully we can continue to get the city's support. And as a chamber, we're open to any suggestions when it comes to staffing, hiring. I'm here to help. So I've been, I've been doing the IT for the chamber since 2007. You know, since the first director from, it's over 15 years ago. I also support the Downey Chamber. One of my biggest clients is the Search and Evolve Filipino Americans. And Mr. Palito, I think you know Joel Jacinto for a long time. And my other nonprofit I work with is the Guidance Center in Long Beach. They have three locations. I work directly with the IT director there. So I'm very involved in our local community around here. And I volunteered to be, I was a basketball coach a couple of years ago. So I'm hoping to volunteer again with the city as a basketball coach. So, you know, I just, I love our city and I love our chamber, and thank you for having me.
Jerry?
Yes, sir.
Jerry Lumba?
Lumba, yes.
Jerry Lumba, thank you for your service. Just wanted to let you know, we appreciate your service. And please attend our Veterans Day Ceremony on the morning of Tuesday, November 11.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming and speaking on behalf of the Cerritos Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else from the Chamber of Commerce with you here today?
Ed Olvino was here with the Cerritos College. He's also on our board, but she might have left earlier.
Yes, Ed Olvino. Ed O-
Ed Olvina, yeah.
Ed Olvina, yes, yes. Oh, yes. Thank you for reminding us, and she was here. So-
She just wanted to focus on the college, and I saw that when I showed up. But I'll start coming every month.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you for coming. You know, and you said you're nervous. Thank you for speaking and showing up by yourself on behalf of the Cerritos Chamber of Commerce. You know, we do have, just like I mentioned when I created tonight, the Internal Ad-Hoc Working Group for Ube Fest. So this council, the Cerritos City Council, can have better communication and liaison and collaboration with the Ube Fest organizers and committee. We have a Chamber of Commerce, City Council Chamber of Commerce Working Group. And so, please, Jerry, I'm glad to meet you. Glad, thank you for coming to the meeting. Please, let's schedule a meeting with you with our Internal Chamber of Commerce Working Group of councilmembers. And let's have that good communication that you presented here at this meeting, okay? So I hope that you reach out to the CMO, City Manager's Office, so we can get you scheduled to have meetings with our ad hoc working group, our Chamber of Commerce Working Group that is established. And we'd love to communicate with you in more detail.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I look forward to seeing you at the Veterans Day Ceremony. Thank you for your service. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Item 7, Consent Calendar. Council colleagues, I would like to remove from the consent calendar. Hold on for one second. Council colleagues, I would like to ask for consensus. I would like to ask for consensus to move item 8a up on, 8 up on our agenda. I would like to move item 8a to be heard now. Do I have consensus?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, council colleagues. So, City Manager, we have council consensus to hear item 8a now. City Manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Item 8a follows up on city council direction to bring back an ordinance that updates the municipal code as it relates to self-storage facilities. This item has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, is now here for your consideration. The overview of this item will be presented by Sabrina Chan, Advanced Planning Manager. And following her presentation, she, Mr. Carey, Ms. Aguilera, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you tonight is a request to amend the Cerritos Municipal Code by way of a Development Code Amendment related to existing quantity limitations on self-storage facilities in the city, referred to as Development Code Amendment 2025-3, the DCA 2025-3. This item is in direct response to the city council direction provided at the August 14, 2025 city council meeting. At this time, I would like to direct your attention to the screen for the presentation. Currently, self-storage facilities are regulated by Section 22.40.730 of the Cerritos Municipal Code, which establishes location, operation, and development regulations for these facilities. Self-storage facilities are conditionally permitted within the city's industrial M and industrial commercial 2, MC2, zones with specific development standards designed to ensure compatibility with existing land uses. Existing regulations also allow for a maximum of four self-storage facilities that can be permitted anytime in the city. At the August 14, 2025 city council meeting, after a discussion regarding existing regulations governing self-storage facilities, the city council directed staff to amend the municipal code to remove the quantity limitation to support property owners and boost economic development. There are currently four self-storage facilities in Cerritos, serving both residents and surrounding communities. The table on the screen provides information on each of the four facilities. Existing self-storage facilities in Cerritos maintain between 300 to 2,000 storage units for rent with average occupancy rates of 90%. Storage unit sizes range from nine square feet to 480 square feet with rental rates ranging from $7 to $641 per month. In addition to the four facilities in Cerritos, staff surveyed self-storage facilities located in close proximity to Cerritos and found that, on average, self-storage facilities in the vicinity housed approximately 1,500 storage units with an average occupancy rate of 90%. Pursuant to council direction, Development Code Amendment 2025-3 proposes to amend the municipal code by removing the current quantity limitation of four self-storage facilities citywide. This change will allow for additional self-storage facilities in the city subject to the permitted zoning designations. DCA 2025-3 does not propose to amend any other development standards. It should be noted that any newly proposed self-storage facility would be subject to review by the Planning Commission and city council through the city's standard development review process. On October 1, the Planning Commission reviewed DCA 2025-3 but was unable to secure a majority vote to recommend approval, denial, or modification to DCA 2025-3. Thus, DCA 2025-3 is being referred to the city council tonight for independent consideration. The proposed revisions to the municipal code under DCA 2025-3 are consistent with the goals and objectives found within the Cerritos General Plan. If approved tonight, the proposed ordinance under DC 2025-3 will undergo second reading and adoption on November 13 with implementation beginning December 13, 2025. At this time, it is recommended that the city council review and discuss the proposed Development Code Amendment and conduct a public hearing and weigh full reading of and introduce an ordinance of Development Code Amendment 2025-3 to remove the quantity limitation of self-storage facilities in the City of Cerritos. This concludes my presentation. To date, no public comments have been received by staff regarding this item. At this time, city staff is available to answer any questions that the city council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina Chan, for presenting the Agenda Report. I also want to thank, in connection with the Agenda Report, Mary Baldurama and Kristen Aguilera, sitting right here. And I will now open. Oh, first, I'm going to ask if there's any questions from the council. Councilmember Say, do you have any questions?
Yes. Now, Exhibit 2, Page 11. Like you mentioned, the Section 22.40.730, the self-storage facility. All those codes do maintain the same. If we lift the four storage, nothing changed. Still, the regulation will be followed as guideline.
Thank you, councilmember Say. You are correct. The DCA 2025-3 only proposes to remove the quantity limitation. Everything else, all the other standards will remain.
I understand it's kind of the only one usage being limited. The rest of the other usage would didn't limit anything. Am I correct?
That is correct.
So... I have no further questions anymore, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Say. Councilmember Hong, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do have some questions, yes. First of all, I'd like to know, what is, this change can benefit our city? Why are we making this proposal? I'd like to know what's the benefits for the city, first of all. And because personally, I do have some concern because of generating more job opportunity or maybe even the sales tax or revenue, you know, for the city. Or, but I understand we are seated to have the limitation of the land use. And we really, I wonder how many empty warehouses we have in the City of Cerritos that we can have this kind of project? And do we have a very well-planned about this storage plant? Because I want to know what's the distance? Because I think before, they identified as four, and they even mentioned about the location. So I think the location, to me, is also very important. I'm not 100% opposed it, but I want to have more detailed information because I want the market and the engineering and the design and everything still complying to our city's code requirement. And it's like, okay, it's like approving any other project. I would like to have this kind of project even in the future. We have to go through all the procedures, like we have to present to the Planning Commissioner, Commission Department, and Commissioner to review all this information first and then give them their best advice to our City of Cerritos. And hopefully, of course, we're going to look at the traffic situation and all the things that are going to, hopefully, is not going to affect our City of Cerritos' economic situation, is actually helping our city's development. And so I'd like to have open-minded to hear more information or suggestion. Thank you from the city staff or even from my council colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. I'll begin by noting that, as you pointed out, with this proposed ordinance, the city's high-quality development standards would still apply. And that was referenced in the exhibit that councilmember Say noted. We have the existing municipal code sections that would remain in place. The city's architectural standards, site development standards would still be in place with, even with the removal of that cap on the number of self-storage facilities. So, and then with regard to benefit, it would allow for the market to have the development of self-storage facilities could be in response to market demand as opposed to it being sort of artificially capped at this point with the limit. So it would just allow for that private development to occur more organically. But of course, subject to our high-quality development standards.
So if, my question, if we take out the limitation of the units, would you think we will be having a lot of storage, self-storage? Or you have a better plan for that, that we have some section, or what?
Thank you, councilmember Hong. From time to time now, we, staff does receive inquiries from self, from property owners interested in developing self-storage. There are limitations in the municipal code currently that establish regulations. For example, self-storage, there needs to be at least 1,000 feet between self-storage facilities. So that, there are other stipulations to kind of control, kind of like where they are. Self-storage facilities are only limited to the industrial M zone and the industrial MC2 zone. They would not be permitted in commercial zones, and so thus, commercial uses would be protected as a result. So hopefully, to answer your question.
Yes, that is for my concerns. Thank you.
Any other questions, councilmember Hong?
No, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Palito.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Oh, thank you.
I will now open the public hearing and public comments on this item. City clerk, it's correct, we did not receive, we, the city council did not receive any written correspondence regarding this Agenda item?
Thank you, Mayor.
Your, your city clerk's office did not receive any written correspondence regarding this item?
Did not.
Okay. So no, no written correspondence. I don't see anyone listed for public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak in public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period and the public hearing. Does the council have any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Say, any additional questions or comments?
I just want to make a comment. I am support lifting the limitation of self-storage facility in Cerritos. Our residents and small business increasingly need more storage option as the housing, commercial space becoming tighter. Allowing more of the self-storage can attract private investment and generate revenue and utilize underutilized properties. I trust the city will remain strong design standard to ensure the project continue to reflect the quality and character of Cerritos. After I review the Exhibit Two under Section twenty-two forty and seven three oh, and I expecting the nurse, the staff will continue follow the standard here that I'm not worried about. And the location is always on the kind of far away sides of the way from Cerritos. I don't think will create a lot of traffic issue. So I'm pretty much support this lifting this space, storage space.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Councilmember Say. Councilmember Hong, any other questions or comments?
Yes, I just thought about another issue. What would happen, because you know, there are a lot of online e-commerce business or like small business, you know? And how are we going to prevent them just using this kind of storage as their own private warehouse operating without city permit, you know, those kind of regulation? I'm worried about it. It could happen a lot, you know, because I know a lot of people want to do their own business because the economic situation and e-commerce is very popular. So all they need is a storage place and they can operate their business. And city is not aware of it if you don't get the, if they didn't apply for the sales permit, you know, license or sales license.
So if the city does become aware of a business, of an entity conducting business in Cerritos without authorized approvals, then our enforcement team would respond. All businesses are required, doing business in Cerritos are required to have a Cerritos Business License. And then depending on where the business is being conducted, there are additional zoning requirements that would be in place. So if the city is made aware of any activity occurring, then we would respond and then address it accordingly. But the self-storage is meant to be simply that storage, not for other businesses other than the self-storage business conducting operations out of that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilmember Hong?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Polito.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No questions, but just some comments in support of this recommendation to remove the limitation on self-storage facilities in the city of Cerritos. On page three of the, of the report, and by the way, thank you to Kristen, Sabrina, and Mary for initiating the report. Table one indicates percent occupancy rate for the four existing self-storage facilities at ninety-two percent, eighty-nine percent, ninety-two percent, and ninety-seven percent respectively. That, that is a high occupancy rate for the, the four existing self-storage facilities in Cerritos. And I have great concern that we are not making available to our public what is needed by the community in terms of self-storage facility units available due to the, the limitation. And as a member of the council at the time when we adopted that back in February twenty nineteen, I, I, I think now seeing that there is this high level of demand, I, I think it does present a problem that this governmental agency is limiting the ability for the market to regulate itself accordingly by providing greater supply to meet the demand in the community. I think in response to one of the council members' questions, City Manager Robert Lopez, I think spoke to that directly. So given that, I'm, I'm ready and prepared to make the motion, Mr. Mayor, at the appropriate time in order to lift that limitation and allow the market forces dictate things going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Polito. Mayor Protem Johnson?
No comments.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem Johnson? Yes, I have I have always been supportive of Cerritos being a business-friendly city. I believe that if we are a business-friendly city, that provides the mix of businesses that our Cerritos residents want and need. And the visitors to our city can come to Cerritos and use those businesses and spend their money in our city and do a lot of take care of all of their business needs and their shopping and their dining, all in Cerritos. By having the mix of businesses that the market demands, the market wants, that our residents demand and want. So that's why I have been against the regulation, the overregulation of this business, self-storage facilities, when we, the city of Cerritos, has not, in a similar fashion, regulated any other, any other business, any other type of business in our city. So this is an oligopoly. Only four self-storage businesses in our city. It's oligopoly. They're almost fully rented out and on average ninety percent plus. There's a scarcity of self-storage units in our city. So the com, that's what, that, that combination of an oligopoly and resulting in a scarcity of self-storage units in our city is I'm, I'm concerned that our residents are not paying competitive prices for storage space. So I want to correct the city's tampering, the city's overregulation in this line of business. And while being business friend, while, while being business friendly to the mix of businesses in our city, I have to balance that with also representing the needs of our residents of Cerritos. And our residents of Cerritos should not be paying, they should not be overpaying for storage space. And if we let the market work in our city and there is demand from our residents and visitors to our city for more storage space, then that market demand will attract maybe another one or two storage, self-storage business owners to consider coming into our city. And there's a lot, there's benefits that are going to come from that because those self-storage facilities, like any other business, has employees who are going to be hired. And maybe there'll be Cerritos residents that are hired. And also, maybe those employees will spend money in our city. They will shop and dine in our city because they're already working in our city. And that business will also be selling sales tax, sales taxed merchandise, just like Starbucks, which doesn't charge sales tax on its beverage, on its drinks. However, they sell, they charge sales tax on their merchandise. The same thing applies to self-storage businesses. All of their customers using the self-storage facility oftentimes have, have to purchase supplies for their storage needs. And when they buy those storage needs, they pay sales tax. But a significant thing that's absent from this report before me, and it was absent from the August fourteen, twenty twenty-five Agenda Report, and it was absent from the October one Planning Commission Report, is the fact that the self-storage businesses can and are in fact facilitating sales of automobiles by our auto square. So one of our storage facilities, one of our four storage facilities, extra space storage has, they allow eighty spaces of overflow, overflow parking for Cerritos Auto Square inventory. So they are helping our Cerritos Auto Square sell cars by providing eighty spaces of parking for car inventory. And I know as the council member and as a council member and as a mayor that of Cerritos, I've learned from the city manager's office that when the auto square dealers are able to have cars available to them right at their dealership or right next to their dealership, that helps themselves sell cars today. And that's why, for example, the auto square is renting parking spaces, similarly, renting parking spaces from Cerritos College. So that helps our autos, so Cerritos College and extra space storage is helping us generate sales tax revenue for our city of Cerritos because those cars that are parked at Cerritos College and parked at extra space storage are being sold to car buyers today because they are in the inventory, on-hand inventory of the auto square dealer, so they can sell that car today. And for example, if we, if, if we say a car is on average about thirty-five thousand to forty thousand dollars, every time that eighty, eighty parking space of cars is turned over, that's a thirty thousand dollars for the city of Cerritos. So thank you for letting me share that. And I, I'm, I want to be a city where we welcome entrepreneurs, we welcome business owners to consider doing business in our city of Cerritos, and we should have that same business-friendly attitude to all legal businesses. And for whatever reason, we're going to remove this overregulation of just one line of business in our city of Cerritos. Council, Councilmember Polito, do you have a motion?
Mayor, can I ask one more question, please?
We already, we're already done with questions. Councilmember Polito?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion to waive full reading of and introduce an ordinance recommending that the City Council approve Development Code Amendment twenty twenty-five dash three, captioned as follows, "An ordinance of the city of Cerritos approving Development Code Amendment twenty twenty-five dash three, a request to amend Section twenty-two point forty point seven thirty of the Cerritos Municipal Code, removing the quantity limitation on self-storage facilities permitted in the city of Cerritos."
Second.
It was moved by Councilmember Polito, seconded by Mayor Protem. Let's vote.
The motion passes on a vote of four to one.
Okay. Thank you to my council colleagues. Let's go to Item Seven, Consent Calendar.
Move to approve?
No, hold on, I'd like to remove from the consent calendar. Item seven C, so would you like to make a motion, Councilmember Polito excluding Item seven C?
Mayor, may I make one quick announcement prior to?
No, I'll make an announcement. Okay, Councilmember Polito, prior to your motion, I'm going to call on the city clerk to make a brief announcement regarding one of the agenda reports that's listed on the consent calendar. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I will state for the record, Agenda Item seven G, Consent to the Assignment of Ground Leases and Approval of an Estable Certificate for Three Cerritos Town Center Office Properties, contains a typographical error in the staff recommendation. The last line references the city manager, where it should read instead, "City Attorney," stating completion of such assignment in the forms attached hereto or such other form as the city attorney shall deem appropriate. This correction will be reflected in the official meeting minutes. City Council Approval of Consent Calendar Items will include approval of the corrected staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Polito. Would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of Item seven C.
Second.
It was moved by Councilmember Polito, seconded by the Mayor Protem. Let's vote. Approving the consent calendar except for Item seven C.
The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. City Manager, do we have a report on Item seven C?
Yes, thank you. Item seven C is a request to unextend an existing contract as it relates to public safety. An overview of this will be presented by Deputy City Manager Ryan Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you tonight supports the City Council's ongoing priority to enhance public safety and reduce residential burglaries, specifically through the use of contracted supplemental patrol services provided by Southwest Patrol. These patrols offer high-visibility coverage in residential areas and operate under an observe-and-report model, working closely with our Cerrito Sheriff's Department. Since launching this service, we've seen a meaningful year-over-year drop in residential burglaries, which shows that the added patrol presence is having a positive impact. Although the original contract with Southwest Patrol expired in June, we've continued on a month-to-month basis with them. And given the program's success, staff is recommending that we extend the contract through the end of the fiscal year. As part of this extension, Southwest Patrol has agreed to lower their hourly rate from fifty dollars per hour to forty-seven dollars and fifty cents per hour, resulting in a modest monthly savings of about twelve hundred dollars. The total projected cost through the end of the fiscal year for the extension of the contract is two hundred and five thousand dollars, which will be fully offset by a savings we identified in our Sheriff's Department contract. So there's no new funding or reserves being needed for this. Staff recommends approval of the contract amendment and the associated budget transfer to continue this valuable service through the end of the fiscal year. This concludes my report. We'll be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Ryan Carey, Councilmember Say, do you have any questions? Councilmember Hong? Do you have any questions?
I have one suggestion. Maybe you can consider also changing the shift sometime, maybe patrol at the nighttime. Because we do have a lot of residences asking for that because of the car burglary at the nighttime. So if, I'm not trying to expand it, the extra contract hour, but maybe we can consider to arrange a better shift for certain time at night. Okay, thank you. uh, to arrange a better shift for certain time at night. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Palito?
Uh, no, sir. No questions.
Mayor Protem?
No questions?
Okay, let's see if we have any public comment on this. Is there any public comment on item seven C? Seeing none. We'll bring it back to the council.
Move to approve.
Now, hold on. Councilmember Say, you have any questions or comments?
Sure.
You have any questions or comments?
I just wanna say this is safety and re- uh, security of residents and business is very important. And I wanna thank you, the staff, the new contract, actually, it's a low price. It went down, so I wanna thank you for your hardworking. Sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
And I will call on you, Councilmember Palito, to make the motion definitely. Councilmember Hong, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, thank you.
Councilmember Palito, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions or comments, sir.
Mayor Protem Johnson, any questions or comments?
None.
Okay. I'm really glad that uh, we have brought this Agenda Item, Agenda Item and Agenda Report for today's meeting because um, Southwest Patrol Services. Southwest Patrol is providing important um, deterrent to crime in our city. It is suppressing crime. It is suppressing uh, residential crime, residential burglaries and car burglaries. My priority all these years as a council member and this year the mayor and and my, what I'm hearing from my council colleagues this year is we want to prioritize the suppression of crime in our city, and we have been advised um, by our community safety office and by our captain, Captain Drew Strong and his team that residential burglaries, which are, we have had dozens of residents come in here last year complaining about residential burglaries. And the goal was to suppress those residential burglaries with this council, which approved um, um, a crime deterrent and crime suppression um, uh, activities and programs, including in the budget we approved uh, in June. So with that in mind, that what residents have been complaining about, especially in this chamber, uh, dozens and dozens of residents from different neighborhoods complaining about is they didn't like being fearful of residential burglaries. And thank you to Southwest Patrol for being a visible deterrent during those key residential burglary times when people are at work and school during the daytime. And um, I talked to one of the Southwest Patrol uh, personnel when he was driving up my, you know, on my street. And he told me that he drives up and down my street four times, four times in the day. In in his, uh, during his shift from, you know, eight to five P M., he drives up and down my street four, four times, and I'm happy to hear that. So what I'm wondering about is, and and I'm happy, thank you, Ryan, for reporting that there's not gonna be any, we're not gonna use any general fund, general funds for this, for this extension of the contract because the money's there. Um, and we're gonna be transferring it um, from one account to another because you found the money in the budget. So we're not gonna use any general funds to keep using Southwest Patrol. What I'm wondering is the idea that um, we also approved in the budget five community safety officers. Okay, and we currently have two. So we approved in the budget five community safety officers. We only have two, so even though those five are in the budget, we're saving money that way. Is that right? City manager, that we are not paying for five community safety officers right now. Um, we're only paying for two, even though the budget that we approved was to pay for five. And on top of that, Southwest Patrol, we have determined that their presence is suppressing crime. And I'm gonna talk about that in a moment, but how does that affect the actual numbers at the end of this fiscal year that we approved in our budget for five community safety officers? And we're already in October, and we haven't, we only have two community safety officers.
Yes, so there is, uh, as of now, um, a little bit of a budget savings because of the delta between the budgeted amount and the actual amount expended. Um, so there is savings there. And uh, we'll, we're continuing to look at that and determine, you know, where else there there could be budget savings.
Okay, great. Thank you. So Captain Strong, I'm gonna have this talk with this. I'm gonna share my comments again, but I'm gonna ask you if you'd like to share anything because you're doing a fantastic job. Thank you for everything you're doing, but we had this meeting tonight, October thirteen. And um, you know that I look at the month, the Cerritos monthly statistic, crime statistics, right? You know that.
Yes, sir.
And I looked at the residential burglary crime statistics. And like I said before, this council, we we started working together at the end of March. Well, the first three months of the year, residential burglaries started off on twenty-eight in January, and they were double digits every month. And then we started working together at the end of March, and our focus was on suppressing crime. And every single month that we've been together on this council, starting in April, it's been single digits. April was seven residential burglaries, May was eight, June was seven, July was six, August was six. And I, and I thanked you for that at our last meeting. In September, residential burglaries were three residential burglaries in September. And you know, I I I'm just so thankful to our Cerrito Sheriff's Station, Captain Strong, our deputies, Neighborhood Watch, Southwest Patrol. Southwest Patrol is helping provide a visible deterrent to crime in our city. If they see something, they call Captain Strong and the Sheriff's Station. And our Neighborhood Watch is playing a big part. That's why just last week, a, a, an, a a, uh, Cerritos resident saw what they thought was a residential burglary, and they called it in. And the deputies caught the alleged residential burglar, burglar, uh, burglar.
Yes.
And uh, so Neighborhood Watch and the training they give to their residents worked together with the Sheriff's Station. And a fast response from the deputies caught the alleged burglar. How did you? How did Cerritos get September to be the lowest month residential burglary month of the year of this calendar year, three residential burglaries? How did you guys catch that residential? How did your deputies catch that residential burglar? Last week, could you please share with us how you guys are suppressing, how you you officers, how your deputies, how you, Captain Drew Strong, are suppressing crime in our city?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, I wanna start by saying thank you to council and yourself. You guys are the, the ones that have basically supported us throughout this entire situation that we were in. Without you guys, this wouldn't have been possible. Also, for the citizens, every single one of them that has called us, every time they see something suspicious, even if it's something minor that they, a lot of them don't feel like they should call because they're worried that it doesn't seem like a big enough deal to them. Well, it is a big deal, so when we come out there, sometimes we find things that nobody expects to find. So, uh, and third, I'd like to thank the deputies because they're out there every single night, all night long. They're working overtime, they're working very hard to keep the city safe. So some of the things that have really, uh, contributed to this are, obviously, like you guys were saying, the security that the city has. Those are an additional, additional patrol car that are out there visible and deterring crime. So instead of, let's just say, for example, five cars being out there, you can add another three to that sometimes when they're, when they're out there patrolling as well. So that puts us sometimes to eight cars. So, uh, almost doubling the force, and and they don't book anybody, they don't take anybody to jail. They don't leave the field really for any purpose whatsoever. They're always patrolling and always deterring. I've had a lot of feedback from the neighborhood, uh, as far as people that have come in contact with them, had a great experience with them, said they're doing a fantastic job, just like you said. So we're, we're very happy with the work that they're doing as well. Um, a lot of the things that we've implemented i- in the city are unprecedented. Nobody else has done that, such as making audible burglar alarm calls a priority. Nobody else has done that, so we believe that's contributed to, not necessarily the apprehension of suspects, but definitely the deterrent as as far as how fast we get there. So when they hear the sirens and they realize that we're coming, a lot of times they have people laying off a block away if they're trying to burglarize houses to let them know if the, the sheriffs or the, the cops are coming. So if they see us coming faster, they're unable to break into the actual location. They have to flee from the location prior to actually breaking in, which that's a success, uh, as far as I'm concerned. As long as they're not breaking into a house, we're getting them out of there. As far as apprehending them, that's, uh, most of that credit goes to, uh, the citizens for, for calling us. Um, when they call us, there are eyes and ears out in the field. So, uh, most of our successes with that have, have been regarding the citizens calling us and letting us know what they see. Um, you know, if, if they see something suspicious, they call us and and we come over there and we'll detain the person and investigate from there. Sometimes they call on people that are not breaking in, but they're not sure, but the investigation will reveal what we have in the end, and then if the person isn't breaking into a house, then we let them go. If, if they are, we determine they are by the investigation, then we arrest them. So, uh, I mean, this, this, these numbers are amazing. Um, I've seen since April, we're down to single digits, seven, eight, seven, six, six, and then the, the month of September, three. Uh, come a long way since November of last year. So I'm, I'm very happy with the success, success of this. I think that the, uh, security guards are doing a fantastic job. Um, we are on a moratorium for the Sheriff's Department, so we're not expanding any contracts right now. Uh, so these guys are really helping, and these guys and gals and the security guards are really helping us out right now.
Thank you, Captain, for that update. And, uh, you know, we are, yeah, you know, uh, year to date compared to two thousand twenty-four, we are about thirty-five percent less in residential burglaries. And in overall Part One crime, to all total Part One crimes year to date compared to twenty twenty-four, we are almost thirty percent lower. So thank you for reducing crime in our city. Thank you to the city manager for everything you're doing. Thank you to the City Council for everything. You're, we're working together to keep our residents safe, to keep this a safe city. If we are, if we are known as a safe city, people are gonna wanna come and shop and dine in Cerritos because they know they're gonna have a safe time. Um, and, and, uh, I just want, and I, most importantly, I wanna thank Neighborhood Watch. Because I know that Neighborhood Watch is a big reason that September uh, we only had three residential burglaries compared to twenty-eight in January. So thank you, Captain Drew Strong. Thank you, council colleagues.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Say?
Can I say something? I do wanna say something. I wanna start even from the manager. Uh, you make me look so good. Um, we have a lot of issue in my area, really bad, because it used to be almost like two times in one week, the house got broken in. And then we also other issue, uh, as former board member, a school board member, we have a lot of issue as, uh, Teslau School area. And after I had appointment with our manager and, because I follow Chinkaman, I talked to you about it, the area's really bad. Uh, the cross street, the apartment people parking on the Teslau area, a lot of needles, because I went to visit. And needles and car parking there overnight, so the staff really spend the time overnight. The neighbors very happy, use folks to stay overnight. I, I, I was told twelve o'clock, two o'clock, three o'clock, four o'clock. They drive the area, make sure that area is safe. The neighborhood is very happy, so I wanna thank you, manager and the Sheriff's Department. Thank you, made me look so good. Because they did respond back, you did a great job. I said, no, no, I didn't do it. Folks did it here, but I, I wanna thank you, really, um, appreciate it. My neighborhood, yes, we're the number one, I believe, so I hate to say that, but they were really watching over, uh, special thanks to Mail Corps text really follow every minute I see something, that's the minute sometime, there are so many people watching for each other, even the the package, people start looking for where the package goes to. I wanna thank you, the neighborhood, um, all those captains are working, it should pay off. Also because one of them, besides our staff. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Say. Councilmember Hong?
Yes, um, thank you. Um, I think it's a great teamwork, you know, with us and with all the residents, we all working together to achieve the goal of safety is our number one priority. I just want to verify one thing, uh, on seven C, uh, report, Agenda Report, second paragraph. Uh, it says, um, the third line, it says, we have three uniformed uh, patrol officers. Uh, do we have three or we have two? Just want to double check on that, maybe, uh, the, Ryan, the Deputy City Manager can give me the answer. Thank you.
Yes, we currently contract with Southwest Patrol for three patrol officers. They're in the city Monday through Friday from eight to five. So we have three.
Thank you.
Councilmember Palito, do you have a motion you wanted to make?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, before I make my motion, I just wanted to add in um, remarks of gratitude to our uh, captain and all of our sheriff station personnel and all of our, uh, city staff, uh, who have provided the support. And I wanna echo the, uh, the, the remarks of our mayor, uh, commending, uh, the diligence and dedication of our Neighborhood Watch uh, program. I just wanna underscore this, that, um, you know, the numbers that the mayor, uh, shared, I think is very, very telling. And that, uh, January, February, and March, a total of fifty-nine residential burglaries occurred. And then in the immediate past six months, um, only thirty-seven with an average of only six per month. Whereas in the first three months, the previous council had an average of twenty. So this is a dramatic drop. And, uh, you know, so that we could understand the magnitude, uh, of this achievement, if there is only six residential burglaries on average over the past half year, that's out of over fifteen thousand five hundred, uh, um, homes over eight point nine square miles. And so the importance of the patrols that have been provided during the daytime hours, giving that visible deterrent to those criminals out there is critical, absolutely critical in order for us to have this very impressive statistic of a single-digit only six residential burglaries on average. I just can't wait to see by the end of the year, uh, how much it's gonna even drop further. Uh, because what we're about to do is we're gonna fund it more, significantly more. And as the mayor said, uh, without dipping more into our general fund. Thank you to staff, was it, Mr. Carey, for finding that, uh, additional funding that we'll, we'll be able to fully fund, expand the level of funding to a significant s- six-digit degree. So with that, Mr. Mayor and council colleagues, I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract amendment between the city of Cerritos and Southwest Patrol for the provision of supplemental security patrol services through the end of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. And to approve a budget transfer of two hundred and five thousand two hundred dollars from account one one zero four five one six one three seven zero to one one zero four five one six one three four zero to facilitate the contract extension with Southwest Patrol.
Second?
Thank you.
Moved by Councilmember Palito, seconded by Mayor Protem Johnson.
The motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Right on.
Thank you, council colleagues. Thank you, council colleagues. Okay, that was item seven C. I think we are now on item nine A. City manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Item nine A comes to you at the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Commission in accordance with city policy. It's a proposal for a potential five K run walk event. The overview of this proposal will be presented by Acting Recreation Superintendent Samir Patel. And following his presentation, he and Ms. Hilton, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. During its special meeting held on August seventh, two thousand twenty-five, the Parks and Recreation Commission unanimously voted to request authorization for the city, from the city council to study the feasibility of the city hosting a five K run walk event as part of the two thousand twenty-six Spring Fling Event. According to city policy six point zero two point zero five zero, city commissions and committees are not permitted nor authorized to commission special projects or direct the use of city resources to perform work that is beyond the scope and or purview of the respective commission committee without obtaining prior city council approval. Staff conducted preliminary research and is estimated that the cost to present a five K run walk is fourteen thousand dollars. Funding the event would require a budget amendment as the adopted fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. Budget does not currently have available funds to cover this cost. Should also be noted that this cost does not include any street closures or any additional insurance coverage the city would be required to obtain for this event. Closing of streets would require assistance from Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department personnel, which would significantly increase the total cost. It is respectfully recommended that the Cerrito City Council review and discuss the information provided in the staff report. And in accordance with policy six point zero two point zero five zero, select one of the following options. Approve a five K run walk as part of the two thousand twenty-six Spring Fling Event, suggested by the Parks and Recreation Commission and direct staff to prepare a report for the city council's consideration of the details of the event and the total cost. To B, refer the matter back to the Parks and Recreation Commission with modifications or deny the Parks and Recreation Commission initiated request. That concludes my report. City staff would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for the report, Samir. Thank you for that report, Samir Patel. And thank you for the agenda report as well, Annie Hilton. Do we have any questions from the council? Councilmember Say?
Sure. I think this is a great idea. Many cities have a five K run and walk. Donning City has it. ABC Unified School District has a five K for quite a few years until the pandemic. But my question is, I know we're always talking about budget and cost. I remember when ABCSD, we do charge the runner like thirty dollar per person. And that will kind of help bring some revenue if it's possible, take into consideration. Thank you. That's just my question. Do we have that or you guys planning to?
We have not determined a cost for the event, but there would be a cost to try to recoup some of the the costs that will incur for some of the contracts that we'll be utilizing.
Yeah, because you will order a lot of T-shirt too for the five K run.
Yes, it is a standard to to receive a commemorative T-shirt for the completion of the event, so that is planned if this is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Say. Councilmember Hong, do you have any questions?
Well, I like this kind of event. It's great. I participated before when ABC School was hosting it. It was a lot of fun and a lot of people participate. At this time, I just personally think we already finalized our budget. And unfortunately, I wish this would be, you know, can be brought up earlier stage. And I would consider this one for the next year, but not for this year right now because of that. A lot of residents already complaining that we we don't give out the calendar. We don't bring it out and mail the calendar and we cut back a lot of events, you know. So I'm like, as a budget concerns, I would like, they're going to say, okay, you cut back all this now that you're going to add on this. So it's not fair to some of the people. They say, well, what is the principle? You know, what is, what is, what are we doing, you know? It's not fair. You cut back all that, then you oppose that. I mean, I love all the activities. I mean, it's good for the city, it's good for our residents. But at a good weather, you know, good timing, yes, we all love to enjoy it. But right now, I'm more focusing of our the budget for our infrastructure, our safety, all the major items. And there, that's where I stand. But maybe if this year, the city manager and all the staff, we work out, we all work together. We actually, we didn't spend that much money. We don't have the deficit on the budgeting and I'll be more than happy to consider that next year. Thank you.
Councilmember Palito, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do, Ms. Mayor. When I was first on the council, I remember that we had a five K and but I don't see it in in the report. I'm wondering if staff is aware of when that happened and what the level of community participation was, how much that cost, how much we generated in terms of revenue from the participation fee and how much of that offset the the cost of the total event. I'm not sure if that analysis was done in preparation of this report. Unless any of that is available for an oral presentation.
Thank you for the question.
Yeah.
We have looked at that. We are aware that there was a five K. It was actually associated with the Festival of Friendship and it was held over at the Los Cerritos Center. But it's been close to twenty years since we had that. I mean, it's been a very long time. So it's not something that we've looked at recently. It did impact the mall significantly because it went around the mall parking lot and the perimeter. But it is something that we're aware of, but we haven't looked into it as far as attendance numbers. It it essentially was removed from the Festival of Friendship because of its impact at the mall and the numbers kind of dwindled as it went around or as it was held every year. So something that we kept the festival friendship, but removed the five K.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And yeah, I wasn't quite sure where it took place. It was so long ago. Thank you for mentioning that it was at the Los Cerritos Center. And I'm wondering and studying it, if you knew if it had a positive impact on sales over at the Los Cerritos Center or if it had an adverse impact because of contributing to traffic congestion and so forth. Because I'd be interested in if we were to pursue this, if there was an economic development angle on this, then that might help persuade me if there was a projected positive benefit by bringing it back.
I'll begin, and I can defer to Mr. Patel for any additional information. But it's my recollection that that five K event at the Cerritos Center was held earlier in the morning with like a roughly seven AM or eight AM start time. So it was designed to not conflict with the mall's regular shopping hours, usually like ten AM. And so use of the parking lot then didn't have a conflict. And therefore, as a result, I would guess that perhaps it didn't really result in much additional shopping or patronage because it was sort of designed to be at different times.
Okay, that's that's helpful. I appreciate that feedback. I have no other questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Palito. Mayor Protem Johnson?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Say.
I was just wondering, I remember for ABC School District, we had a five K every year, was very popular. We also invited local business people there and I think they were supporting financially. And like I said, the each person who runs also paid thirty dollars for that. And so that will bring some revenue in in there. So probably we, I know we haven't done this for a long time, like a council, Mr. Palito mentioned, maybe we can work with the school district, so how we can elaborate it. So it costs less and trying to make even balance as we can. But but you have to look at the big picture on there. We connect the community together. We bring their health, healthy practice in our city. We bring more people here. And there are times like we just mentioned about the Uber Fest. You bring the people, use the hotel, you bring the people, go cross street by thing. We don't see that, but behind that, it does bring a lot of revenue to our city too. So we have to do balance both for the residents. And we also kind of advertise our city to the outside people, bring more people in. As part of my reason for this position, hopefully we can support, make a better city and healthy city. And I think five K is a good idea. But I also support our councilwoman. Mrs. Hong mentioned about the budgeting, but I believe the staff will work hard and try to find a way to balance this budget. If you can, I think this is coming from the our commissioner. And I I don't want to kind of discourage that idea. Maybe we can work on work around that, the budget issue. And I think definitely it's a positive the way I'm looking at. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so I don't have any questions, so I will now look to public comment. I will now open for public comment and public hearing on this item. Saying none. I will close the public comment period. Does the council have any questions or comments? Councilmember Say? Councilmember Hong?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Palito?
No, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, just a quick comment. I'm in support of events in our city that unite the community. I think a five K run walk event would really bring our community together. We've done it in the past, but I hope our staff could consider. Cerritos High School Cross Country Team does use both Kenaby Park and the sports complex as their route for a five K run. I think it's a five K run, but they do. And perhaps if we were to utilize that same route, we would not have to do any street closures. And it's actually safe as well. There's nobody out on the street running. Families can participate on the grounds of Kenaby Park as well as the sports complex. But there is a way to do it on that campus. So I just want to thank our Parks and Recs Commission for bringing this idea forward and for finding ways to unite our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Mayor Protem Johnson. Good ideas. I, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel for some things. If if there's already a five K run walk, that's a route that's already been being used by, for example, the Cerritos High School Cross Country Team. So thank you to the Parks and Recreation Commission for presenting this to the city council. I like this idea. I'm, you know, I just, I think to myself, the City of Cerritos should be having a five K run walk. You know, our neighboring cities, like Lakewood, for example, La Palma, for example, they have five Ks, you know, and we're we're a better city. We're a better city than them. You know, and we already have this this event that the residents look forward. They plan their, they plan their their day around it. They plan, they plan their day around the Spring Fling and Fireworks. And you know, having a five K that can complement the Spring Fling and Fireworks Spectacular. And just like you, just like the conversation, it was mentioned that the one at the Festival of Friendship at the mall was in the morning where it didn't, it minimized the conflict. It minimized the inconvenience to the city. You know, I I'm imagining that this Spring Fling and Fireworks Spectacular five K run walk would be early in the morning to minimize the inconvenience to to the city. And, you know, Councilmember Say touched on this, is that, you know, we need to have sponsors. And I think some of our local higher electeds might consider sponsoring, our business partners might consider sponsoring. And but, you know, this is about, ultimately, this is about a Spring Fling and Fireworks Spectacular that becomes even more spectacular with a five K run walk. It's about providing community family events, like Mayor Protem touched on this. You know, we're bringing the community together. And, you know, it's not about, in the end, it's this is, we're not a business, we're not, we're not always. The City of Cerritos, we're not, we are not focused on squeezing every possible dollar of profit out of events, you know. We are budgeting this two thousand twenty-six Spring Fling and Fireworks Spectacular. It's not, it's not supposed to be, we're not supposed to be making a profit from our city events. The question is, are we going to add a five K run walk to to this event? And I think let's make it even more spectacular by approving this idea that came from our appointees. Our appointees brought this idea to idea to us to have a five K run walk. According to the agenda report, the Parks and Recreation Commission brought this to us unanimously. And they think that the city council should study the feasibility of this. And you're asking us to approve that with this agenda report, right, Samir? And so I envision a more spectacular Spring Fling and Fireworks Spectacular that includes this five K run walk that was brought to us unanimously by a Parks and Recreation Commission. You're budgeting it for fourteen thousand, twelve thousand plus two thousand in staff time, our staff. I always wonder about that because our staff's going to be working anyways. But you're you're allocating a a discreet amount to this of two thousand, so fourteen thousand total. And I just see that this agenda report doesn't take into account sponsors. It doesn't take into account community partners who want their name connected to the first annual Spring Fling and Fireworks Spectacular five K run walk. Okay, and I think we have some legislators out there that would be interested in having their name on it. I think we have some business partners that'd be having their interested in having their name on, that want to have their name on this. And it's not about, again, it's not about making money, but I I also hear the concerns of the community that please spend our money wisely, be fiscally responsible. And we could do that by looking for sponsors. Do any of my council colleagues have a motion? Okay, Councilmember Say?
I make motion to remove five K run slash walk event.
Second.
So are you approving the recommendation?
As the staff recommended.
Approving the staff, are you approving the agenda recommendation of number two A?
Yes.
I I made the second.
Okay, so is that, do you hear that, city clerk? And the maker of the motion, you are approving item, the staff recommendation, item two A?
Yes.
Okay. Let's vote. It was seconded by Mayor Protem.
The motion passes on a vote of four to one.
Okay, so thank you, council colleagues. Who's the liaison to the Parks and Recreation Commission? Who's the liaison to the Parks and Recreation Commission?
That would be me.
Okay, can you please send them an email and let them know what was approved tonight?
Yes, will do.
And then also, Samir and Robert, the idea is, you know, what what's what's the date of the two thousand twenty-six Spring Fling?
I believe it's April twenty-fifth.
Okay, can you start also putting together the sponsorship, the sponsorship materials for, so we can solicit sponsors for this event? Let's start working on that because you need to give them as much time as possible.
Yes, we'll, we'll get started on planning that and other logistics and we'll report back to the council as we get closer.
And let's have it at a time that is the least inconvenient to the community. Having a 5K run-walk around the vicinity of the Spring Fling and Fireworks Spectacular. So that was item nine A. Now we're going to move to item ten legislative items. City Manager, do we have any legislative items?
No, sir. We have no items under ten A or ten B this evening.
Report from the city manager. Does the city manager have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have one item this evening and that is, I'd like, I'm happy to announce the recent promotion of Kristen Aguila to the position of Senior Assistant City Manager.
Is, is Kristen Aguila?
Yes, yes, the person sitting right next to me. Kristen has been an employee of the city of Ceritos since two thousand and five. She's worked in several roles in planning over the years, most recently being the Director of Community Development for the city.
The one that's on the camera right now? Oh, she's not on the camera. Sorry.
The one who was on the camera, yes.
Let's, let's get her back on the camera, please.
Yes, we'll focus on Kristen. Kristen, yes, that's Kristen. So Kristen's been a longtime employee of the city, most recently the Director of Community Development. She has bachelors in urban planning and a master's degree in public administration. She's been, provided a long time support to several commissions of the city. And will now be assisting me in leading our executive team and also supporting the city council and executing the, the city council's direction, policy direction and meeting our various goals. So I'm happy to be working with Kristen in this new role. And with that, I'm going to turn the mic over to her to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I am truly honored to serve as Senior Assistant City Manager for the city of Ceritos. Since joining the city in two thousand and five, I've been privileged to work alongside a dedicated team and contribute to the successful growth of the city. Earlier this evening, Dr. Fiero spoke about labor of love. And I would just say, in short, Ceritos is truly a labor of love. It's special what we get to do here for this great city. I want to sincerely thank City Manager Lopez and the city council for your trust and your support. I look forward to continuing to work closely and collaboratively with residents and businesses and members of the community and in supporting the city's strategic priorities through partnerships. Lastly, I do want to thank my family who, without them, none of this would be possible. So I truly appreciate you all. Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to see if there's any questions, questions or comments from the council. Councilmember Say.
Well, of course, I welcome, by the way, I really appreciate it since, I think, the March, I got elected to be a councilwoman here. You always there support me when I call you, you was available. And I didn't know your cell phone number, seven one four. But after you gave it to me and you also opened on the weekend. And even the last weekends, you can call me anytime, but I didn't bother you because I know you need some day off, but I want to thank you so much and definitely your hard work has been paid off here today. Again, this position, looking forward to work with you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hong.
Yes, congratulations. I'm so proud of you, you know, because, you know, I was, I've been have the honor to work with you since I was at the Planning Commissioner and I was very impressed. You are, I'm so proud. I think you are the first director as a planning commissioner and the manager, right? So I'm so proud of you and I really admire your knowledge and your passion and your hardworking for our city. And you always give us the best advice and we need you there to guard our city. And I think you, you are the best choice, you know, and I'm glad our city manager made a great choice for our city. And I believe now we can on the full gear to make the city even better. Thank you so much and congratulations.
Councilmember Polito.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to congratulate you, Kristen. This has been my tenth year on the city council over three terms. I have had the pleasure of working with you and when you speak of labor of love, I, I've seen it truly in action. And my congratulations just doesn't just come from me, but also my whole family, especially my, my wife, who had the honor to serve on the Planning Commission. And I know that though she's at home, because she, you know, got home late from work, but I think she's viewing. And she saw that you're seated here and so she's very excited that you are in this new position. So on behalf of our whole family, thank you and best of luck to you in the years to come in your service to our great beloved city of Ceritos. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Kristen on your new appointment here as the Assistant Senior, no, the Senior Assistant City Manager. I have to get used to that. You know, you've always had a lot of passion for our residents and for our staff. You lead by example and I'm very proud of you and I'm looking forward to working with you even more so in the executive team here and congratulations, you've put a lot of hard work into this city. And I hope you're proud to see, you know, all the work that you have done here. Thank you so much.
Kristen, thank you. I have seen many times the dedication to our city. When you work with applicants and you work with residents and you work with businesses. I've seen it, I've heard it, I've heard feedback on it. You are a exemplary fantastic representative of City Hall to to, to the city's residents and, and their representatives and our businesses and their representatives. Thank you. And congratulations on today being your official first day of being the Senior Assistant City Manager. The Senior ACM, we're calling it, in case you hear that Senior ACM. And there were beautiful flowers in your office today. Where, where did those come from?
I was fortunate to receive flowers from the great team in community development as well as the CMO office. And then as well from my husband and my children to celebrate my first day in this new position. So very thankful for everyone.
It's exciting to see those beautiful flowers in your new office today. And I agree with Councilmember Polito, the sentiment he expressed. The thing that I will always remember about you is your mentoring and friendship to my sister. Thank you. You taught her how to be a, how to serve the community. Thank you for that. All right. Reports, city council communication. Oh, did you have anything else, council member? I mean, city manager, anything else you wanted to say about your Senior ACM?
Just I, I appreciate all the, the warm wishes. Congratulations from the city council. I echo those. And on behalf of our employees, I congratulate Kristen in her new role.
Thank you. Congratulations. City Council Communications, I will start with Councilmember Say.
Thank you. And once again, congratulations, Ms. Aguila, for your newly positioned. September twenty eighth, I attend the Volunteer Coach Appreciation Picnic to thanks coach for their dedication. And one of the thing I remember were how much they've been done to the youth group kids. I remember Mr. and Mrs. Ariana Baratos, longtime services to Cerito Soccer Team. And Ben was legacy continue to inspire our youth. Appreciate staff for organizing a great family event. Thank you again. October first to October second, I attended California JPIA Risk Management Forum. And I gained a lot of insight on confidentiality, privilege and handling complaints. I always valued JPIA training for their principal guidance. On October eighth to October ninth, attending California City and New Conference at Long Beach. I participated, I participated in some sections such as events municipal climate action through partnerships. I enjoy reconnecting with fellow council member and exchange update on city initiate. The last one, which is the October second, was a very busy Sunday. I missed my church. But one of the thing I, as a mother and wife, it turned out to be the very happy weekend. My husband went out with me, it's the first time. He's not a political person, but he enjoyed trying different kind of food and different country food. So we're attending Diwali, we also attending Uber Fest. And he was so happy. We bought different food, we tasted. And, and at the end, I, we went to my daughter's house and pick up my two grandkids. We went to the Uber Fest again. So we, I mean, two the thing we always like Uber ice cream, Uber cake. So by the time they go home, the face will look kind of purple and it was so hyper. And then this is grandma, what's next one again? I says coming. I don't know what date is, but definitely we'll go. But I want to thank you so much. We really enjoy all the events that we provide. And once again, thank you to staff for your hardworking and made me gain more weight. I was trying to lose weight, but again, I still attending those beautiful event that you, you folks organized and very successfully to me. And I want to thank you also have my husband come out too. Thank you. That'll be my end report. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Say. Councilmember Hong.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I'm just going to make a short report. Also, on September twenty eighth, I also joined the Volunteers Appreciation Day. We have a great event there and so happy to see all those volunteers, coaches. They are so dedicated to volunteer and dedicate their time to our, our city's youth. Okay, and October first to October third, I also joined the JPIA Risk Management Education Forum. And as I really enjoy this kind of event because I do gain a lot of knowledge from this kind of event. They do not only give you the theory, they also have a discussion section, which to me is very beneficial to me because those are the real case. And it is, the money is worth, worthwhile spent and I do learn a lot from that. And I appreciate that we do have the budget to go there because not all the city have this kind of budget, you know. So I really appreciate it about this. And on October fourth, I have, I join another organization, which is what we call the I Chinese American Association. And we have youth student speech. I was honored to be invited to be as one of the judge. There are so many different city mayors or council member are all there. So I spent like half there, half day there as a judge. But I really enjoy it. It's very important to have the, I think maybe in the future, maybe our library can have that kind of program. Encourage the youth to come out to have a speech contest, you know. And we have to pick out a very interesting subject. We have the, from the elementary school and then we have junior high and high school teams and college teams, like, you know, what is AI affecting us, our life? Because this, most of kids are using AI and we all know AI is very important in our future life. So I, you know, it's good to have this kind of speech contest and you can hear what are the kids are looking into this. And how, how can, you know, how would this affecting our future life and how we handle that? They also talk about the, the eyes, you know, eyes, action, everything. They all mentioned about that. So we have pros and cons. It's a good speech. I would recommend maybe the library can host that because I know our library keep on getting, bringing out very, very challenging and very exciting program. So just a suggestion for that. This is what I learned from there. And also, this is what I like to do is to participate more events when it is possible and this is very important for our city council to join most of the event and to do the networking with other city and also to present our city. And we were so honored to see our mayor pretend was, hey, you should tell them the good news. Okay, I'll let you have the honor to report that. We were there to witness that, you know. So I let her speak on her behalf. Okay, thank you. Congratulations.
Anything else? Councilmember Hong.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Polito.
Thank you, Miss Mayor. A few events to report that I attended and supported on Sunday, September twenty eighth. I was honored to join in the Ceritos Volunteer Coaches Appreciation Picnic along with my city council colleagues. And then later that same day, attend Uber Fest over at the Cerito Center for the Performing Arts parking lot. And then on Thursday, October second, I had the honor to represent our city in celebration of Gandhi Day in honor of the birthday of Mahatma Gandhi at the Chug Farm, the location in Ceritos where the statue of Mahatma Gandhi is right there on the corner of Alondra and Carmenita. And to receive the first ever Consul General of India to Los Angeles. It was an honor to meet him and welcome him on that very important day of celebration of Mahatma Gandhi. And then on Saturday, October fourth, I was proud to join in with our, our mayor in helping to cut the ribbon for the Baskin Robbins has been relocated to South and Carmenita. It's exciting and I want to say thank you to Baskin Robbins for providing, you know, all the delicious treats to those who attended. On Sunday, October fifth, it was really a day of personal pride to attend the fiftieth anniversary of AYSO Region fifty-four at the Cerito Sports Complex as a former player forty something years ago for AYSO where I fell in love with the sport of soccer. It was just such a wonderful day to join in with all of the, the families, you know, the, the coaches, the parents, especially the players and along with Mr. Mayor and my council colleagues. And just this past week, it, it was wonderful to be able to participate in the League of California Cities Annual Conference in Long Beach at the Long Beach Convention Center. It was an informative experience as well as a wonderful annual opportunity to reunite with colleagues from throughout the state, representing all the municipalities throughout California. With that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Polito and Mayor Protem Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the fiftieth anniversary of AYSO. I attended the Bellflower State of the City. I was present at the Ribbon Cutting and Open House of Upwing Energy that opened up here in Ceritos. I was also at a two-day forum, USC Executive Education for Local Leaders for two days. I attended the Uber Fest event on September twenty seventh and twenty eighth. And then again on October eleventh and October twelfth, as you heard earlier, brought in about eighty thousand people. On October sixth, I was at Poetry and Harp at the Ceritos Library. We were recognizing Filipino-American History Month at the library. And October seventh, I was also there with Chef Henry Paneda when he did a demonstration. And he is the owner of Modern Filipino Kitchen. October eighth, I was also at the Cal Cities Conference. And I want to thank my council colleagues and our executive staff that were present when I was sworn in. I was elected to the Board of Directors on the Women's Caucus. So thank you, everybody, for the support. Thank you. I just want to say it was just nice to see all of you there because we were the I just want to say it was just nice to see all of you there because we were the loudest city. On October eleventh, I was at the LA County sponsored Diwali Fest. And I also was at CCPA and watched the show Philharmonic. And today I was at Babies and Books, so thank you there to the library. Victor's an excellent reader. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Potem Johnson. And I, one thing I want to say is, you know, thank you for inviting me. Thank you for inviting me to your birthday. Leilani, Joy, Tom, she had her ninth birthday this weekend at the Washington Room of Liberty Park. Thank you for inviting me and letting me represent the city of Cerritos as the mayor in presenting you with a birthday proclamation for your ninth birthday. Those of you out there might be familiar with her because she is a singer who sings at our events like our Let Freedom Ring where she sang Girl on Fire. And she will also be singing at our Christmas tree lighting, the Monday before Thanksgiving. Another thing is, yes, I join in in congratulating and celebrating our mayor Potem, Linda Johnson, who is stepping up and serving our city and its residents and representing our cities, our city and its residents by engaging and getting involved with the, our regional organizations, our state organizations that the city of Cerritos is a member of, the League of California Cities. The League of California Cities is our state organization for local electeds. The, the city council members and mayors across our state. And they have, within the League of California Cities, they have caucuses that also provide training and advocacy and leadership and representation. So I am honored and blessed to have been for twenty-four, twenty-five, for two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, a board member of the Asian Pacific Islander Caucus of the League of California Cities. And I'm thankful that I was, I am continuing for twenty-five, twenty-six to continue to be a board member of the Asian Pacific Islander Caucus of the League of California Cities and representing our city of Cerritos and its forty-eight thousand residents on this caucus, this API caucus that represents the cities across the state of California. And I'm so excited that our city of Cerritos now has a council member who is representing our city of Cerritos on the Women's Caucus of the League of California Cities. Which is, as some of you might remember, we just had a fantastic event in our Skyline Room where the Women's Caucus rented out our Skyline Room to have, to have an event celebrating women in leadership that included Sharon Kirk Silva, Janice Hahn, Katrina Foley, Katrina Foley and a top leader from Amazon. A top woman leader from Amazon. And I think this is, just like I am the first ever Cerritos council member slash mayor to ever represent the city on the API Caucus of the League of California Cities. We now have the first ever Cerritos council member slash mayor Potem to ever represent the city of Cerritos on the Women's Caucus of the League of California Cities. So we are getting representation on the, at the League of California Cities for the first time in a leadership role on the board of the Women's Caucus. Congratulations, Linda. Okay. I have it here somewhere. Next on the agenda is item twelve, City Attorney. Will you please announce the closed session items?
Yes, thank you, mayor and members of the city council. We will be recessing into closed session to discuss items twelve A, twelve B and twelve C. There's no need at this time to discuss twelve D, there's no further development, so it's just the three items I've listed on the agenda. And twelve E.
Any, any, what did you say?
And we also can do twelve E as well, but not twelve D.
So twelve A, twelve B, twelve C and twelve E?
Yes.
No twelve D.
Correct.
We will now adjourn the special meeting and the council will recess to closed session. Congratulations to Senior Assistant City Manager Kristen Aguila.